I remember what is continued from November 19th, 2013. It's a work that's reported in the General Manager Department of Neighborhood Empowerment pursuant to motion of these articles relative to potential policy changes under the neighborhood council system, petition of board of neighborhood commissioners for subdivision or adjustment of district boundaries for purposes of better representation.
Please take all the downed people. Those who are here and ready to vote, you should, if you have to, be here on an island for a call in this committee. If there is no island on the agenda, if you want to speak to, and it's within the purview of this committee, it's a public comment card, it will be included in the session.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Gracey Hooch, General Manager for the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. In regards to subdivision of policy and the proposal, there have been a few changes since the last report that came before the committee in regards to fiscal impact. Just briefly, we currently have ninety-six neighborhood councils. We just certified a new one in South LA in the last few weeks. And if this subdivision policy were to go through, which I do think that it is necessary to have a subdivision policy of some sort, the impact that it could potentially have on a number of neighborhood councils is something that needs to be considered just because of our ability to support the neighborhood council system and not only the department's ability, but also office of the city attorney, as they also have staffing that is there to support neighborhood councils as well. When we look at the ninety-six neighborhood councils and the population, it currently takes twenty thousand residents to form a neighborhood council excluding the exception.
What is the exception beyond twenty thousand?
Beyond the twenty thousand, it's typically a specialized area of the geographical, such as Allee and Valley Riverside, they have about six thousand folks because geographically they're isolated. So if they can show that the population in that area couldn't reach twenty thousand, however, they have an area that should be certified as their own neighborhood council, we can certify them in those circumstances. So out of the ninety-six, if the subdivision were to go through, just based on the current residential numbers, forty-two neighborhood councils could subdivide once, thirteen neighborhood councils could actually subdivide into three neighborhood councils, and the four that would be able to subdivide into four neighborhood councils.
That means with the twenty thousand?
Correct, correct. And there could potentially be smaller areas that could subdivide based on the exception. So that would equal about one hundred fifty-five new potential neighborhood councils. And the numbers in our report did provide up to one hundred and fifteen neighborhood councils. If we wanted to add staffing of one to ten neighborhood councils, that will basically increase our current budget from two point five to about four point five million dollars. And that's just on salaries, no mention of any of the other costs associated with that. There has been a change in our staffing as well. At the time of the original report, we had eight neighborhood empowerment advocates or analysts, and these are specific to the field and support the neighborhood councils in the field. Out of those, we are now down two. One is also in funding, so we only have five neighborhood empowerment analysts for the ninety-six neighborhood councils currently. The issue that has also come up is that the department needs exempt positions, and because of the citywide cap on exempt positions, we've had issues filling our current exemptions. So out of the twenty-six authorized position authorities for this current fiscal year, we only have seventeen that are filled, and out of those, we require ideally eleven exemptions, but we are in the process of trying to figure out how we can get those exemptions given the citywide cap. So we would have to find some type of solution for the department in terms of getting additional exempt positions, should we try to staff up in order to implement this policy. Even if the policy didn't take it, I mean, even if we didn't have all the neighborhood councils try to subdivide at once to like to the one fifty-five level, even if we just had a handful of neighborhood councils that were to try to subdivide, we would likely have to have more staffing for that. And because our staffing is specialized typically with a community organizing background, it's very difficult to find civil service qualifications that would have this type of skill set. So we would actually, were to go forward, probably need to look at some more analysis in regards to not only our staffing, but office of the city attorney.
Yes, it's the, yes, so there's, other than using the twenty thousand number, then there is no max, because you may have some isolated neighborhoods that go beyond, just using the twenty thousand.
That's correct. In terms of the exception, yes, there is a, the exception that might allow for even additional neighborhood councils to be formed.
The other issue is that it appears that you asked for additional, additional position, and it was managed, it appears it's a problem with the exemption.
That's correct.
What is that?
So departments, we are very specialized in our work, and what we've discovered in the last few years is that even when we've been fortunate enough to give position authorities, when they have a civil service positions, we don't have many candidates who want to come into the department, because we do end up being highly political, as it is a smaller department as well, there's not as many opportunities to promote. So we don't have many candidates coming in with civil service, from the civil service positions. So we try to make our positions exempt whenever possible, although we are now bumping up against the issue of the citywide total exemptions of two hundred, and we've been working with the mayor's office, the CIO, LA, and the personnel department to try to resolve this matter, because currently, six of our positions are exempt, vacancies, and so we can't fill those right now.
Is there any additional rationale of, we have the smaller numbers other than as representation or is there any criteria that's demanded by the neighborhood council if they want to make that decision?
There is, and I think city attorney, can we, there's a few other criteria in addition to, you know, the historical area or geographically isolated.
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Darryl Martinez says, it has to fit the following criteria, that it's separated from an adjacent community by significant geographic features, the proposed area is identified by name within any of the thirty-six of the community plan areas of the city planning department, or the proposed area represents a historic identifiable neighborhood or community that is serviced by city service providers such as a public library, park, recreation center, fire, police station, or public school. So that exception could be particularly rough.
Is that criteria of ordinance or thing?
Yes, both the ordinance and plan for a citywide system of neighborhood councils.
I think there's actually a couple more missing there. Being that this, doing that piece in the downtown, in the downtown position of this group, they have financial impact, is there any consideration of having these considerations done at a certain point in fiscal year so that they can, or the budget process will not, that application will accept, let's say, the second quarter of each fiscal year can be evaluated, decision made before the budget process in order, has that been considered?
There is no, in the existing proposal, there's no such consideration we could add in, but currently there isn't. In fact, once the department receives a application, we have our district timelines to get across as pretty much as soon as possible, so we would have to change that, that part of the ordinance as well.
Have we discussed this between neighborhood councils, if there, what number might be interested in this, or most of our data is just evaluating if it's twenty thousand and max, these are the numbers they could produce, that we've been advised by neighborhood councils that it would be very interesting?
I only know two neighborhood councils currently that are really interested in pursuing subdivision at this point. It doesn't mean though that once the policy is passed, this provision is passed, that other neighborhood councils would want to take advantage of possibly increased funding for their areas and would go ahead and pursue the subdivision.
Okay, let me get, brief, for the public comment.
So do we have an anticipated number of neighborhood councils that want to subdivide in the potential fiscal impact, and may try to have that happen?
Sure, so there are two that I know of, in terms of the two areas within a neighborhood council that have actively pursued subdivision or some type of ability to create their own neighborhood council. There have been other neighborhood councils that have mentioned it, however, because there was no option, a viable option, they, we have received any other feedback. However, I think once this policy is in place, as other neighborhood councils would want to, as I mentioned before, forty-two would be able to subdivide, and of those forty-two, many could subdivide into three or four councils.
And how much would it cost to get that elected election in the event of subdivision presence?
So for us, it states election, however, I mean, I'm just checking the city attorney list, my understanding is we would likely have to do base election instead, because a selection, which is basically a non-secret vote, it was like a town hall where people just raise their hands, instead of a secret ballot, because elections are only conducted in a number of years between the department and the city court. So with selections, the department takes that burden on completely, so we assist neighborhood councils in doing their selections, so it would be added resources on the department in order to conduct those selections.
Because you're already currently under staff, what future staffing you require as a result of subdivision?
If this policy were to go through now, and there were neighborhood councils that would immediately, even if the two started, we would need just additional staffing just to assist with that. As I mentioned before, we only have five field staff for the ninety-six neighborhood councils, and so we would again need to have staffing, at least one or two folks just to implement this, because we're supposed to basically handle any certifying group and help develop bylaws and outreach and do all those things, and it's quite a lengthy process. And the issue with exempt positions would also need to be handled as well.
And my next question is, do you know if the commission is working on a policy should conflict arise between the existing neighborhood council and, you know, subdivision rule?
This policy, or this proposal encompasses the commission's entire policy, and I believe that they're, they thought that if the election, if there was an election held or selection held in that area, that the stakeholders themselves would make that alternate decision, though we do anticipate that there would be conflict, so the department would likely have to step in and assist in mediation, try to resolve it as easily as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Gracey. Question at the four regional areas that were held over thirty months, they took responses and from neighborhood councils, and thirty percent of responses indicated opposition to the subdivision policy. Are there some common themes that emerged from that as to why the opposition?
I think that, from what our understanding from the opposition, it was basically some neighborhood councils who felt like there would be some areas within their group that might want to split, and that, you know, they were adamant that the original certified neighborhood council represented their community in the best manner. And I do believe it's mostly along those lines. I know there's community have statements from those who is neighborhood council as well, they mentioned that, but they also mentioned the fiscal impact as well, so those were the two themes.
And in reverse, so the responses were more favorable to supporting this, or so it is in reverse?
I think it was the understanding that after, now, next year will be fifteen years when neighborhood councils, first neighborhood councils are certified, that communities change, and that the needs of each community would, you know, has evolved. And if you look at downtown, you know, downtown neighborhood council, that's very typical in terms of, you know, fifteen years ago, totally different, right? So that there should be a way to subdivide an existing neighborhood council without having to decertify, voluntarily decertify and recreate these neighborhood councils, because there would be a lag in services while the neighborhood councils decertify.
Thank you. We have probably fifteen to sixteen cards for other comments. We're going to give one minute per card, if number of items on the agenda today, and he just had, he does seem to be very short, so if you feel the bell come up, we'll call you in, go to the front row. Anything would be helpful if you have comments that you'd like to present in writing, make a immediate impact on this item, if you'd be able to assist Gracey as we tell you this policy. First of all, Martin from City 14, come up. Next, Tab Gaze, next, Clifford Mosley, next, Mr. Furcarstein, if they all come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, councilmembers. Martin Shulager with Councilman Lisa Riz's office. We sought clarification about the policy to win neighborhood councils asked about potential subdivision. We're not here in support of any particular subdivision proposal, but instead the work of the board of neighborhood commissioners, which developed this clarification. And we believe in that process that was developed through BOM, but also then the neighborhood councils would have to go through to subdivide. And I think that process is of submission to thoroughness, that we would get a heads-up of additional councils that may exist. If thirty-eight percent had said they don't want that process, they're likely to stay together. And we should use our budget process to deal with the fiscal impacts, and we should use our...
Tab Gaze, are you waiting here, speaking time? Are you waiting here, speaking time, because you are up there? Hold your second seat.
Thank you. Just to close out then, I would say, where there's fiscal impacts, I would encourage us to use our budget process that's already in place, where there's personnel impacts, or in fact, the existing need to deal with Dunn's personnel issues. Perhaps through the personnel committee, we could get some cooperation to set forth a path for that. And I encourage you to move this forward so that we can have clarification for our neighborhood councils. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Irreconcilable differences, that's not murdered in this first item, but on the agenda of war, we're in this. Our council in the success, the civil war, on success, and we might have a war unless this is such a technical issue, is a lack of education, that the train coming down pressure of the water that will kill a lot of kids at pressure of high school and another high school. In regards to education in high school, this account of checks that had a new school bill because of the cost too much traffic, what kind of thinking is that? In our neighborhood, too much traffic for education. So we want to divide and separate because we want to separate because of irreconcilable differences. These people are not intelligent or moral papers. They don't quite understand what it's worth to live without trains killing us and others. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Speaker, we're going to get started, let me ask two more speakers, Fernando and Rivas, and Alex Bowman come up, and the first one here, Mr. More.
My name is Christopher Mosey, I'm the founder, executive director of LA International Turner High School, I spoke here the last time this committee met, and it's not a death, not a death issue, but it's an important issue that I've here talked about. You know, we are supportive of the process, you know, subdivide neighborhood councils, I think that they've been around for, as the general manager stated, for about fifteen years now, so just like the founding of this country, you know, they start off the Confederation, then they're reviewed, and they change things around, I think that's where we're at right now. We really need to see what's been working, what hasn't, now see some of these neighborhood councils cobbled together at the time, and now it's the time to visit it and see how they subdivide as necessary. What I would like to also talk about is also the time process. Last time I was here, I just noticed on the date was in November of two thousand thirteen, now we're in the middle of February of two thousand and fifteen, so that's one thing we really need to work on is somehow get that process rolling for, you know, with that.
Hopefully you will. Mr. Speaker, Chris Gaze.
Hello, my name is Christopher Gaze, and I am a current student at Lakeview, Los Angeles International High School. I am a senior. And we support the subdivision because, you know, we're looking for a source of our community, we have its own council, acting as a creative management, you know, for example, we won't be having the, you know, the youth are, are underage, you know, actually being able to hold representatives for our, you know, our neighborhood and, that's a great idea, being a senior, you know, being, my hope is being heard actually, and I just think that's a major opportunity for us to have, so I, you know, I really support it.
Thank you very much. We can get those two seats, and as you can, Wendy Reiser and Carolyn Daniels come up, we start with your first speaker.
I'm Brandon Rivas, and I come from the school at eighty-two as well, I am a senior, and, you know, I really, as Chris was saying, I really believe in that we should have the right, because we would really like our school to be part of the neighborhood council, I would say, part of decisions, because, you know, it's going up, many of us have to make decisions, and being able to make those really gives you confidence, and it helps you become, you know, just part of the community, because as a community, you can really accomplish a lot, because not one person can accomplish a lot of things, well, they can, but it's a lot of work, but please, working together and getting everyone together really helps a lot. And to prepare us for being completely partisan in just a few years, this would really help, but in our area that would only come to subdivision, there are just too many people that are there, this is the youth for our community right now. And honestly, I think we should listen to the youth, because they have a lot to offer, and we don't understand the tradition.
Thank you very much. Alex Bowman.
Hi, I'm Alex Bowman, I'm an associate pastor, and the reason why I'm here is, I'm part of the community, and what has happened is a lot of smaller communities in our area have joined together to become one neighborhood council. At this point, it doesn't make sense for us, the communities that are so different from ours. So at the beginning, it made sense for us to come together, there are several smaller communities, and we needed to represent ourselves to the neighborhood, the city council. But at this point, it makes sense for us to be able to separate. The communities are just too different, and we don't want to go through an exhaustive effort of having to close down the neighborhood council at this point. City services are doing a good job, but we want a smooth process to be had for our community. Thank you.
We have those two seats, this here Joseph Reiser and Leonard Schaefer, they come up and they're going to speak.
Hi, I'm Wendy Reiser. As Alex was saying, it was about three years ago, when a whole issue of six different neighborhoods decided to join the one neighborhood council for certification. However, at that time, very few people in our neighborhood knew anything about neighborhood councils. It was actually decided by about three people. But over the last seven, eight years, a much larger and more representative group of people have become involved. And it's because we dug deeper and we consistently reached out to our neighborhood, we take flyers to every residence in our neighborhood before a meeting, and because of that, we have about fifty, forty, fifty people regularly at our meetings, stakeholders at our local meetings, as contrasted to the other communities within our neighborhood council that sometimes really struggle to even make four of six.
Division.
Okay, so, let's see, we, okay, for the last two thousand twelve election, we recruited, our community recruited nearly half of the total board candidates, just from our neighborhood, which would have resulted in the most diverse board to ever have served our neighborhood council. If we had this subdivision policy, we would finally acknowledge growth and empowerment and allow our neighborhood to speak for itself directly to city government.
I'm Carol Hugan Hales. I support city council adopting policies that allow neighborhood councils to subdivide. I view it as a basic right here in chief of the neighborhood. In his motion to, thank you, I couldn't do that, in his motion to the city council that helped move the discussion of subdivide, neighborhood councils to the forefront, council member Lisa R. pointed out that one benefit of finally creating a subdivision policy was lead to enable better representatives of stakeholders, supporting that idea, there are volunteers through the council, and it was based on the average board size, the density, can he represent from four to five thousand people? In our, in our smaller house, basically, it would be more like one to two thousand. Having taught for over thirty years, I'm aware of the benefit to children and teachers alike for the small ratio.
Okay, thank you very much. We can have those two seats, Mr. Hales and Mr. Ego come up for those two seats, Mr. Reiser to start.
Thank you. I take it from some of the comments, some of the questions of councilmembers, thank you for raising them, that you see that there are, there are wide possibility of class neighborhood councils being started, but there isn't a very wide likelihood, and even if there are, you're going to have to ask a lot of us to be pressured to do this too. But what I want to talk to you about is maybe some community officers here, and it could be user thinking, it would, it should happen, but might be third way, and that's limitation of limitation. So far, this has been eliminated for twelve to fourteen years. It could be limited to a small number of neighborhood councils allowed to do this each year, as much as the city can handle, as much as the department can handle. And if you do that, you can also use the funds to go back to every neighborhood council in town, every year three to four hundred thousand dollars to go back to the council if things become new ones the following year. You can allow that limitation to add, also to help the staff. Staff shouldn't be worried about new council meeting a lot of annually, because most of these new councils that are emerging out of the initial are made of the people that have already run neighborhood councils, and they will not need it for a lot of...
Mr. Schaefer.
Mr. Leonard Schaefer, the commissioners, back in October of two thousand thirteen, we sent this committee a letter with regards to our support for the proposal, and it's because it came out of working groups. We point out that there would be a process, that process is basically the same as forming a new neighborhood council, but with perhaps a kicker, and that is that everybody within the boundaries of the existing neighborhood council would have to be convinced that it should happen, much like a... should happen, much like a city's seceding, an area's seceding from, from Los Angeles. So, that would take an awful lot of work, so I don't expect to see it. Plus, there's a certain amount of discretion placed with the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners as to whether or not this is a proper subject for the formation of a new neighborhood council. So, I think those two things would be very limiting in scope along with the process of getting twenty thousand such as that.
Thank you. The next two speakers, Jeff, General Jeff, and Martha, and Carol Mello.
Yes, Jim Handel, co-chair of the budget analysis. I want to go back and reiterate that you really need to have a fiscal impact report. Knowing what we've been fighting for with the department and the lack of funds now and the lack of staff now, and every one of you, fifteen, hear every day from your stakeholders about dysfunctional neighborhood councils that are fighting and having issues, but nothing we can do about it because we don't have the staff. Having said that, doing subdivision, I will tell you will double the number of councils you have. Talking to people out on the west side, people that have seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand people, they're all going to go for the money, which means thirty-seven thousand dollars for each new neighborhood council. New staffing in the department, additional staffing for elections, this has to be better thought out than anything we've done before. Because we're going to be looking at at least doubling the budget for the department, plus doubling the budget for the neighborhood councils that are going to be coming in. So, you're looking at about a, a six million dollar impact right off the bat. So, again, I would urge you to do and have the CLA and the CAO do a complete fiscal impact report on this before you do any decision making on a fiscal matter like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to piggyback on what Jay Handel said. You know, I have no problem with local representation.
Just say your name.
Oh, Iden Spiegel. This country was founded, one of the principles that caused us to split off in England is about local representation. So, in terms of principle, I have no problem with that. I think it's great. The problem is the money. Right now, there's a process that all these groups that feel they're not being represented by a larger council, they can form a community council, it costs nothing, they don't have to deal with the ground act, they don't have to deal with their posting, they don't have to deal with the department's regulations, they can just allow to start representing their community right now. Why aren't they doing it? My guess is because of the measly thirty-seven thousand dollars that we're all struggling to work with. There must be some guarantee that if new councils are allowed to form, it doesn't deplete the pot of money that the rest of us are operating under, or else we're all confronted.
Thank you. All right. To the next two speakers, Rick Young and Dan Garza.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is General Jeff. I am the chair of the Skid Row Neighborhood Council Formation Committee, and we definitely do not agree with the previous speakers because at Skid Row, thirty-seven thousand dollars is not nearly enough to address our issues. We've been a part of the downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council for, since its inception, since two thousand and two, and in thirteen years, our, our community still looks the same. We need our own neighborhood council to address our issues and needs, and, you know, we will not be, it, it's not in our best interest to be left to, in, in the downtown San Francisco Council. The problem with that, well, we do support the subdivision. The problem with that is that the language as it sits right now is not in our best interest because the voters would be those in the downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council boundaries, and many of them have never been to Skid Row, they're not familiar with Skid Row's needs and issues, and they should not have a determination on Skid Row's fate. We feel that an amendment should be made, if I can conclude, we feel that amendment should be made to where the applying neighborhood councils have the option to either go with the vote that is on the books right now, or have an option of the vote actually just being within the boundaries of the applying neighborhood council. And in our, in our case, that the boundaries, the vote should come down to the Skid Row community. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Arthur Aladeo, and I'm currently in a neighborhood council that can't seem to get anything done because it's like dysfunctional. There, instead of working on suggestions and ideas to fix the community, they're simply constantly fighting. And to support the split up or making of your own neighborhood council for your own ideas and the people that you live within your community, they come up with different ideas, and I think that if we have a check, the split, and it was obviously able to do that, that we would be able to make decisions for ourselves instead of having to worry about what other people in other neighborhoods want to do for themselves. Therefore, not getting anything done in our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And who next, this, Ivan, Michelle Archie, come up. Mr. Young.
Rick Young, nine-year resident of Skid Row, and the residents and the wholeness of Skid Row support item number one, subdivision, because we know from personal experience that the only way, I'm telling you, the only way that Skid Row is going to improve and get better is if the residents and the wholeness of Skid Row are able to call the wrong shots. It's called counterinsurgency in Afghanistan and Iraq, and I'm telling you that the counterinsurgency is happening right now. We have grassroots leadership, we have, we have Mr. General Jeff Page, people like that, who are willing to stand up and lead. So, give us that opportunity. We're not asking for your help, we're asking for your confidence in us. We can do it. Thank you.
Don Garza. This whole issue of matter for Skid Row is about one thing. As veteran of the United States Marine Corps, having earned a combat action ribbon, I have inspired two minefields in steel to save my life and earned two service stars, I understand how important it is to back the Constitution of the United States, specifically the First Amendment. This is autonomy. People have a right to be able to have and voice their concerns and not be filtered through someone else. I was there in two thousand and two when we started by the Neighborhood Council for downtown Los Angeles. I also, I, what I'm seeing right now is a part of my legacy, which was to help make sure that the people in Skid Row got to play at the same table with everyone else, learn the rules of the game, and grew up. Now, it is time for Skid Row to be allowed to grow up and not to be patronized. This is, autonomy is best. We can move forward with this, we can change the community, we can allow no longer to be a policy, but an organic community to begin to be created from within, or not. Thank you.
I just want to applaud the efforts of General Jeff, Don Garza, everyone from the community we cannot ignore. As a twelve-year stakeholder of the downtown Los Angeles area, I'd like to point out, this is from the city and the county that the New York City Board does not exist. I was born in Inglewood, black people, people of color, polished people, we are used to this. This is why we're asking you to give us the opportunity to separate so we can begin to continue in the effort to clean our streets, to, to create community building, positive activities, like the street basketball games, like the, the art exhibits, and OG is involved in, so that we can create community, so that we can have healthy, positive, clean environments, not in a car type where there are only nothing, black men in the streets, where private, the brave, and the police, you know, are, are attacking, moving homes. We want community, we want to have a chance to represent ourselves, so that we can be, have a better voice represented at the city council, because these things do not address the issues that are most pertinent, community value, and cleanliness maintenance of our, of our, of our autonomy as citizens.
Thank you very much.
So, we can improve downtown as a whole. We want to divide or recognize such.
Thank you. Any other questions? Gracie, let me give some direction, and hope that we can, you just work, I, I just give a little sense that the motion that we prepared on this meeting are, should be improved, but I think we're going to, you know, certainly have that, I'd like to see, like to report, it comes to council, but in that report, I think we have, those are the, the exceptions are, the idea of, the, 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 we use, we, 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 also, we need to have the issue that deal with the, this, opposition, some of the summary, the summary of those who are supporting, why. And then, I think we also to have some structure that allows people to make these recommendations during a certain time of this week here, so they're not being handled all through the year, given their budgetary impact, so that maybe, you know, just like this week here starts in July first, people make the application in July, it's, 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 it's in the first quarter, get loads, improve the budget process, cause it was an impact, we consider. And also, we do need to ask the CLA and CAO on analysis. I think the charting provided me important is what could happen. The next thing is how they operationalize that as regards to impact on the budget. And I think we also have to find a way to institutionalize the needs of the department so that if it's a ratio of one to ten, that, that should be something that as they're approved, did not have to come back this time and say, I have two people, it should be a stable ratio that we can send forward to the group and say, as, if this should occur, if things were to increase, then there should be a certain number of people assigned that should, it's not. So, I think it's nothing more, more frustrating than I've seen the neighborhood council, the people expecting work to be done, and we don't get it done. And I think also, we're going to progress, I don't know quite how we're going to progress in the sense of if all of a sudden we have a ninety-five to two hundred neighborhood councils, how does that get funded? I don't think we can guarantee that there will not be funding merged or suppressed from existing neighborhood councils. I don't think we can have unlimited budget of one that says, I'm willing to go from two, three million to ten million and not say there's some restraint on. I think we need to have that discussion with the CAO and some guidance as to how this might progress. And I think giving people guidelines of how they can apply, what the limitations are, and, and may even be prospects of saying, we only have this only year. But there's got to be some structure in advance so people know what they're working with and timeline, when they come in. It's not going to be dealt with year-round because at a certain point, the budget is not absorbed. And so, those are things I'd like to see in the report that we send to council to approve the motion, but with certain caveat, the naked operation would be simple.
I want to thank you. I think it's also important to anticipate the number of neighborhood councils that may be looking into a subdividing and include the fiscal management in passing, right now. Yes. I think this year, it's, it would be great to get a, a fiscal and managing passes back and just give four others following year as well.
Is there, you know, like, you put back, you can, you put back the timeline, I know it's extensive, but...
We'll try for thirty days to...
Thirty days?
Yeah.
All right. Let's put it on...
I don't know about the CEO, the CLA, it's hard though, in terms of their...
Let's do this, let's pass forward, thirty days, if you can come back and tell us where we are, if we have a reporting process, if not, you at least have an update, but we do need the CLA to give input, ask you, analysis of what the impact, how to structure, even with this, whether your regulation, whether it's two-year, three-year, whatever, have a plan that says to general neighborhood council bodies that we're going to address to give these subdivisions a year or four or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll look at thirty days and ask that you go back from, Gracie, do you need anything else?
Mr. Chair, this for, for the record, we're continuing the item for thirty days. We're, we're continuing the item for thirty days.
For thirty days, that level of input that you have.